A bunch of public hearings tonight. Anybody that does come up to the podium, I ask that you please speak directly into the microphone, just so it can be recorded. You also need to state your name and where you come from prior to speaking on any of these applications. And then any questions or comments you do have about an application on the agenda tonight, I ask that you direct directly to the board, and we will do our best to answer them. Any questions that you may have. First item on the regular agenda tonight is Gluck Summit Properties ARB. Public hearing for ARB review of five single-family homes located on Seven Avenue in Central Valley. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 228, Blocks 9, Lots 1.22, 1.23, 4.21, 4.241, 4.243. Just a quick thousand-foot view of the project, and then we'll go out to the public.
Sure, yes. Hi, my name is Eric Asman. I'm the architect for the project. I live in Washingtonville and work in Washingtonville. And so it's been a long road to get here, but we're here. And, you know, we're doing five houses on, I hope to construct five homes on like previously approved lots. And we've made a lot of adjustments, and a lot of adjustments and a few concessions. And a couple of the houses are in the Ridgeview, all the houses are in the Ridgeview, it's not one, but Lot 4, 9, or so we've recently changed those to wood siding.
Right.
All right. So I have about five models. Can I go over them?
Uh, yeah, just go ahead, real quick.
Okay, this is Lot, this is Lot 1. So it's got vinyl siding. And these are the colors, this is the front, this is the rear, there's the roofing. All right, the next lot is Lot 4. It's a Lot 4, it's got wood siding, it was recently changed. And these are the colors, the colors have been filed. They haven't changed the colors since the last meeting. Okay, I have a list of the colors. This is Lot 6. Lot 6 is across from Lot 1, and it's next to Lot 7. Let's go back here. Here's Lot 9, Lot 9 is the other home that could be seen. Okay, this wall also has the wood siding on it. And 6, and Lot 7. Lot 7, these are the colors. And this is what Lot 7 looks like. Lot 7 is next, is next to 6 across from 1. So, you know, all the colors are not the same on every house.
Right.
You know, the colors differ. And the, you see, the windows have to be, have to all have a, all have a non-glare film on them. All the decks will be stained. And that's it. Anything else?
Well, I think that's good for now. I ask that you take a step back, so I can ask that anybody on the first row that wishes to speak on the Gluck Summit Properties application. Second row. Third row. Anybody in the room wishing to speak on the Gluck Summit Properties ARB? Going once? Going twice? This is where I need my gavel. Thirty times? I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing on the Gluck Summit Properties ARB.
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, council has prepared a draft resolution of approval for us to consider for approval tonight. Everybody have a copy? As always, after several pages of facts and findings and review, we come to the specific conditions of this resolution. No building permit shall issue authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architectural Review Board as part of its approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issue for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. Everybody okay? Prior to the signing of the plan by the chairman, the applicant shall comply with the specific conditions number 16 of the 2008 Resolution of Approval stating, "Prior to the expiration of this conditional filing approval or the issuance of a building permit, whichever comes first, applicant shall secure an SPDES permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the DEC, to the extent that such a permit is required by the DEC. The applicant shall provide proof of coverage under SPDES general permit for stormwater discharges from construction activities to dissatisfaction of the village's engineer." Okay. B. Revise the plans to comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated July 30, 2021, including extending the conservation easement on Lot number 4. C. Revise sheets L 701 and L 702 to include a key to the landscaping plan symbols. Revise the plans to remove the note stating that Lot 2 is a vacant lot.
No, Lot 2 is not a vacant lot.
Right, so he's gonna remove the...
You gotta remove the note stating...
Remove the note that it's a vacant lot.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. Provide proof of filing with the Orange County Clerk's Office of a deed restriction in such a form as satisfactory to the planning board attorney prohibiting the removal of trees planted as mitigation to the view corridor. Number 3. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall comply with specific condition number 11 of the 2008 Resolution of Approval stating, "Applicant is required to make improvements to Seven Avenue so that it collect and convey storm water in the appropriate fashion, all to the satisfaction of the village engineer and the town highway superintendent, including but not limited to the proper sizing of the driveway, culvert pipes in accordance with the village engineer's memorandum number 43-08-043 dated July 28, 2008. Specifically, the flared end section with the RCP pipe and riprap discharge along the southern lot line of Lot 8 shall be installed or located in the field for inspections and accepted by the village engineer and highway department." The applicant shall comply with the specific condition number 12 of the 2008 Resolution of Approval stating, "Applicant is required to make improvements to the Oak Concourse Road property so as to have it convey storm water in an appropriate fashion, all to the satisfaction to the village engineer and the town highway superintendent, including but not limited to swales in accordance with the village engineer's memorandum number 43-08-043 dated July 28, 2008. No improvements to the Oak Concourse Road may proceed unless and until the applicant posts a cash bond or irrefutable letter of credit to ensure the successful completion of such work, including a one-year guaranteed period. The cash bond or irrefutable letter of credit shall be in such amount as hereafter determined by the village engineer at a time such as improvements are intended to be undertaken to ensure that the estimate is reasonable related to the cost of materials and labors applicable at such time." You're killing me, Rick. "Any irrefutable letter of credit shall be in such a form as acceptable to the attorney for the village, specifically the swales shown along Oak Concourse shall be constructed per the approved plan. Where swales were previously constructed, they shall be cleaned for inspection and confirmed adequate by the village engineer." There's a reference to the town highway superintendent, Rick. Should that be village in B? On line 1, 2, line 4 of B?
Uh, no, because what you're doing is, we've carried forward the resolution conditions as they were in the 2008.
Okay.
So you're quoting that. But what I can do is put in parentheses, now village.
Okay.
So it's clear.
Thank you. "The applicant shall strictly adhere to the limits of disturbance shown on the plan prior to the issuance of a building permit for a particular lot. The limit shall be staked in the field by a licensed landscier and confirmed by the building department. The limit demarcation shall be protected by the construction fences until disturbance is complete and the area stabilized." Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any of the approved dwellings herein, the applicant shall provide as-built drawings of the onsite stormwater management facilities. These drawings shall be filed with the building department and village engineer. All new windows shall be constructed of non-reflective material." Okay?
If I add a number 5, that they were constructed or covered or uncovered or coated with on some type of material, because a lot of times it's done by putting a coating on it.
Okay. You okay with that? Okay. All right, I'll offer a motion to accept the resolution of approval with the two minor modifications. Second? Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Hartman Hudson Point ARB, review draft resolution for ARB of proposed addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Said property is located 9 Hudson Point, is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 255, Block 1, Lot 2. I don't see Larry or one of his associates. Is anybody here from the Hartman application? Just thousand-foot view of what we're doing. I just need you to give me a thousand-foot view of what you're here for, and then we'll go with the resolution. You gotta give us a thousand-foot view, a quick synopsis of your application, and then we can go over your resolution. So I need you to give, in front of the podium, just give us a quick, what you guys are doing at the residence. You're here for an addition to the home, correct? Okay. So they are here for, I'll do it. All right, thank you, sir. This is an application for ARB Enrich Preservation approval for an approximately 1,300 square foot addition to an existing dwelling in WP3 located 9 Hudson Point. Tonight, we are here to review the resolution, draft resolution of approval. Once again, after several pages of facts and findings, we come to the specific conditions. This is being approved for a single-family, of single-family use only, and no other additional accessory or related use is being approved hereby. All new windows shall be constructed of non-reflective material, and prior to plan signing, the plan note shall be modified for consistency with this requirement to the satisfaction of the village planner.
You could just say constructed of or coated with.
Or coated with. Okay. All new plantings shown on the plans as or as required by authorization by this resolution of approval shall be planted in a timely manner consistent with planting seasons and maintained in the health and vibrant condition in perpetuity. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village planner dated July 29, 2021, to the satisfaction of the village planner. I will offer a motion to accept the resolution approval with the minor modification to number 2.
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're welcome. Have a good night, sir. All right. Next item on the agenda, Christine/Friera, public hearing for ARB application to erect solar panels on a single-family home located at 5 Pleasant Drive in Highland Mills. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 211, Block 1, Lot 61. You just gotta look, is your microphone on? Is there a little green?
Probably not.
There you go. All right.
All right, thank you. So, good afternoon, guys. My name is Ed Gallagher, representing Momentum Solar for the solar panel project at 5 Pleasant Drive. It is a 19-module system, 6.46 kilowatts. The conduit for the system is gonna run through the roof into the attic, and the, each panel has a wattage rating of 340 watts.
So this is, this is just the typical of the solar installations we're seeing going around the neighborhood, fairly low-profile panels?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? I figured it was fairly straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, not the one who has a picture of the house going around the corner. Is it just on, is it just on one side of the roof?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So it's gonna be on the, if you, on page in the design plans, if you look at page PV2, I think it's page 3 in the design packet, or maybe 4. The panels are gonna be on the east side of the roof. I also do, I printed out some pictures of the house itself, if you wanna just take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful. The panels themselves are on, are on that third page in the design plans, and then I just have a picture of the, of the house itself, so you can look at where they would be.
So the panel, this is just on the render, but the panel should be right there. What, 2, PV2, yeah, that's the driveways, just a nice up there.
Mr. Chairman, if you could ask that those pictures that are now being considered by the board be submitted by the applicant's representative to the building department?
Yeah.
So you just want those pictures I just gave you guys just included with the application?
Yeah, you could send them, you could send them over digitally.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
That's fine.
Okay. Yep, oh, sorry.
I didn't mean to pull that either.
This is where it's gonna be over here. Huh? It's pretty straightforward.
Just on the block, just on the main house.
Maybe, have any other questions for? I'm just gonna ask that you just take a seat for a second, because we did actually schedule, to help move this application along, we did schedule the public hearing for this evening as well. This was, the public hearing notice was printed on Friday, August 13, in the Times Record, and notifications were sent out to the surrounding properties. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the Christian Fiera, and I'm sorry if I'm getting the names wrong, application? In the front row. Second row. Third row. Anybody in the room? Once? Okay. I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This was referred to the county planning GML on 8/11, so we can't take action till 30 days from that, right? Rick?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody want to, I have a, the draft resolution approval, does anybody wanna go through that, or they just wanna wait until the following? Can't vote on anybody, so it's... Okay. All right, so this, you can come up, sir. So what we have, we had a, what they call is a GML 239 referral, this is a referral to the county planning department. So they have 30 days to issue any comments on the application. If they issue no comments on the application in 30 days, we have a resolution of approval that's been drafted by our attorneys. We'll get you back on the agenda, and then we can vote on that application. But we can't take action until the county has either answered us, or the 30 days is expired. So it's 30 days from 8/11. You'll, same way you, the building department notified you of this notification, you'll get the same notification for that meeting, and then we can take action on it that night.
Would that be the 15th, right, Chris?
Yeah, so whatever meeting is close to, to that, we'll have you on. So whatever meeting is, is close, is, you know, past 30 days, we'll have you on. Get it taken care of.
September 1st.
15th, so it'll probably be the 15th, you'll be on most likely. All right? All right, thank you for your time, that was quick. All right, move on along. Mitchell Sunpower Corp., Mera, ARB, public hearing for ARB application to erect solar panels on a single-family home located at 6 Collin Drive in Highland Mills. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 245, Block 2, Lot 2. Good evening. Did he turn it off on you?
I think so.
No, I hear you.
You can't, I'm pretty loud.
I was, I was...
Um, yeah, I can definitely, because it's all, we could hear, good evening, ladies gentlemen of the board and all present. My name's Melissa Mitchell, I'm here with Sunpower Corporation on behalf of Marius and Adria Mera, their solar installation project. What we're looking to do is install a 7.85 kilowatt solar system on the roof. It'll be grid-tied and roof-mounted, with a total of 18 panels on the front of the house, and a total of six panels on the back of the house. We have most of the panels on the front, due to the fact that that's where the southern most consumption will be coming in from the sun, and they'll be able to generate more production. The panels also, the conduits will be running from the roof into the attic, and each panel is 327 watts. I am certainly open to answering any questions that you all may have for me, and as for photos, I submitted them to the village already. Oh, yeah, you already have them. But I'm happy to submit any additional documentation if required.
All right. Questions or concerns from the board? I just ask, just as a procedure, you could just take a seat for one minute, so I can open up the application to the...
Oh, sure.
To the public, and then we'll go from there. Okay. Anybody wishing to speak on the Mitchell Sunpower Corp. application? First row? Second row? Third row? Anybody in the room? I got a spiel bound. Once? Twice? Three times? Motion to close the public hearing on the Mitchell Sunpower?
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Same as the other applicant, this was noticed to the county on 8/11. We do have a draft resolution of approval by council done, so once either we don't hear back or hear back from the county, so you figure beyond the September 15 meeting for action, and we'll be done, and go from there. Okay? Thank you very much for your time, thank you for coming up. Okay. This is, this is where we hit the box. Okay, I'm very sorry if I mispronounced his last name. Kazal...
Keslouskas?
There you go. Justino, review documents submitted for ARB Enrich Preservation review of the proposed exterior renovation to existing rear addition for the replacement of patio doors and windows and siding. Said property is located at 29 Mountain View Drive in Highland Mills, and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 219, Block 9, Lot 14. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Keslouskas, reside at 29 Mountain View Drive. We're here today, actually, to present to you that we'd like to make a repair to the location from water, past water damage that came down from the back hill, and I have pictures here, it'll be a little hard to see, may I approach, and I could present them to you?
Yeah.
They could explain?
If you look at the pictures, you see the bottom of the window sagging?
Yes.
So what it is, it's only is it inoperable, it cannot be, only one can be partially opened and closed, so we're trying to repair this, and on the advice of the contractor, put in windows and insulation walls to correct the issue.
Okay.
Here's another picture, move closer. And with, and with that, I took other surrounding pictures, because it was something about the glare of the windows with neighbors. I also have those, I can show you.
Yeah, and what I'll need you to do tomorrow is, you'll just, you have those in digital, if you could just email those to the building department, and they'll make it a permanent part of the, of the file.
Because it has the issue with glare, because the windows are ready, the contractor informed us that they're gonna be glare-resistant, I'm not, I don't know the exact terminology, but they would, you know, they're gonna be insulated windows, it's gonna match, we're not changing anything of the structure, we're gonna make, make the siding match as close as possible.
Okay.
And that's basically what we're doing, we're not changing...
Basically, you're putting a wall of glass back. You have a wall of glass there, now you're putting a wall of glass back.
We're taking out the glass altogether because of the, the sun and everything.
Right.
So we're gonna put in smaller windows...
Okay.
...to cut down on the sun factor, and to bring it up to the proper, what the contractor said, the proper insulation that's supposed to be at that part of the house.
Understood.
And they have to reinforce underneath, they have to put footings in, because from the water, the freezing, when it froze, it just lifted them up, they're loose, and that's what caused all that sagging. So we have to have that put in to beef up the found, you know, the, the understructure, and that's basically what we're doing. We're not changing any, we're not putting in bigger windows or anything elaborate, we're just, we don't have a great budget, so it's...
Understood.
So, basically, we're trying to do.
Just curious, has anything been done to mitigate the water from doing this again?
Well, it's coming off the hill, so what we're doing is, we're having them put in a French drain...
Oh.
...to cut the water off, that it don't go against the house, because when it comes down, it's like, like, we got like six drains coming down off the mountain. We even talked to the town, we said, is there any codes that we could prevent the upper houses, because their water, when it rains off their roofs, is coming down, all that's coming down up the upper streets, and it's, and it's just not our house that's affected, it's the neighbors also, they had to go in and put in all of these drains, and finally we, you know, we come up with enough money that we could, we even had to take out a loan.
Jonathan, I know you had a few notes, comments?
We, we were doing these materials on 5/11, and sure, I'll give our gavel, and it's really just very small questions. We just wanted to know, are you putting any new lights on the outside of the house, or are you gonna cut down any fixtures?
No, no, we just put it, whatever lights are up there, we're just gonna replace them with newer fixtures, and that's it. It's not gonna be, you know, extra ones or anything like, whatever is there, we're just actually fixing and just matching what's there.
Okay, just, the only, the only other sort of comments I have, we found a wrong number on the application, for the, for the tax number, that needs to be just corrected. Also, on the drawing, on the plan, on the notes, it says there'll be half, I think half gypsum or typical siding to match, then on the application it says certainty, DDL for vinyl, so I just wanted to, that's, I guess for your next day, if you really need to choose different brands, and then be able to bring them a sample when you find one that matches the siding.
Gypsum, that's, they're just, they're gonna be putting in plywood from what I understand.
Yeah, that's...
And then they're gonna put Tyvek's, from what the contract, contract explained to me, is they're gonna frame out the build, the back there, they're gonna put windows, and they're gonna put Tyvek's, and they're gonna match whatever siding is on the rest of the house, try to match it up the best they can, the vinyl siding.
Just, in your, with, ultimately, you need to bring a sample of what you're gonna use, and have the exact, you know, number for it, or name, or color, and... And, uh, the next year, you're going to install the anti-reflective window film. And you, uh, are going to email your photographs that you took of the neighboring houses, so that's...
Yes.
Those are really all my comments. I don't see any, any problem, just fixing a few things on the application.
So, we do have to, we do have to schedule for a public hearing, just it's part of the review process. So what Jonathan is referring to is, did you see what the architect had before? That little sample board that was up here before? He's, he left now, but he's got, it's got like little swatches of the material and the color.
That's going to be used to do the repairs?
Yes. So you don't have to, it doesn't really need to be fancy. We just need to know what manufacturer, and what color, and what material, and just like a little, a little swatch of what it's going to look like.
All right.
Um, it's just so that the public can see it if they want to, uh, comment on it, and then that will become part of the file itself. Um, did you get a copy of Jonathan's memo? Did they email this to you? It's from NPV?
Um, yeah, it was, uh, August eleventh.
It was part of the email?
It looked like this.
Just give me the copy. Was that from Maria Rube?
Yeah.
Well, here's, here's, this table is... Yes. We have, uh, just want to make sure you have it.
He does have it? Okay, good.
I did receive that, yes.
All right, good. Um, so yeah, just, uh, the, the application just got to be fixed with the section number, uh, the correct SBL number on it, um, the little, the sample of the, um, the siding.
Yeah, the number I just took off the, all of...
Windows, we don't need a, uh, right, Jonathan?
What?
We don't need a sample of the window.
No.
Yeah, that's it.
Any else? Any questions, comments, concerns?
Somebody mentioned that they're going to have reflective coating, right?
Right, it'll be part of the residue, it'll be part of the residue.
I, I did have one, one question, but, um, and I don't know if you can see what I was doing. This part, this looks like it's... Is this, this is the foundation?
Where did that come from?
I think you...
No, it's my question.
I don't think it's you.
Oh, they put this in...
Yeah.
Sorry, wrong application.
Sorry, that is all put in, so...
Okay, so we have the, he, he already did the... So are we okay with scheduling a public hearing for the...
No, I'm not, yes.
Aye?
September fifteenth?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for September fifteenth. A second, second by Tommy. Any questions? Okay, I'll also make a motion to, uh, type this as a type two on the secret.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay, four up. Okay, um, so there'll be, same thing as public hearing, September fifteenth. The notices will go out. On that day, you'll just need to come down with that little, that little swatch of whatever you're going to use to repair the siding with and the color that's going to be there.
All right.
Um, also do, uh...
What about a resolution?
I was going to make a motion to ask Council to, uh, draft a resolution of approval.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Rick. I'm sorry.
Now, so September, there's no work that could be done before September fifteenth, in other words, with any structure work there?
That's, that, that's correct. They can't issue a building permit until this application process.
Just, just for information, once that meeting goes, providing everything goes fine, is there any type of a window that I would know when, when that permit will be granted and we could start work?
It's as soon as, we'll, we'll vote on it that night. Um, Council sends an actual, uh, paper copy of the resolution to me to sign. I sign that, I give it to the building department, and then they can issue their, their building permit from there. Sorry, go ahead, Rick.
General idea.
Wait, you just can't, you can't do any work until you have a building permit?
Of, of course, I understand that. That's why I'm trying to see what type of timeframe down the road, because winter's approaching and we're concerned.
It should only be, uh, you know, for your planning purposes, two days after the...
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So next day, you'd probably be able to get the permit by the following month.
Okay, all right.
All right, that's, any questions for us? And you, you know, you just email those pictures over to us and...
Building, to put that big, long email address, yeah.
Yeah, the building department and Village of Woodbury, yes, that, that big, long address.
Yeah, I emailed everything else.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr., Mrs. Chairman?
Yep.
I just wanted to, uh, note that both for this application and all prior applications that you dealt with tonight, all of those applications were exempt from the town's moratorium, and that's why you were able to take action.
Thank you very much for keeping me honest. Take me. Okay. Estate Management, 152 Seven Springs, ARB. Review documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation, uh, proposed single-family dwelling and removal of existing dwelling. Said property is located at 152 Seven Springs Road in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 213, Block 1, Lot 13 dot 12. East Gate Management Representatives? Anybody for East Gate Management, 152 Seven Springs? Okay, what do you call, we'll go back to the bullpen for that one, Rick?
Yeah.
All right, moving on. Mayor, ARB. Review documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation for an addition on an existing single-family home. Said property is located 95 Scutamunk Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Sections 204, Block 1, Lot 101 dot 2. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Loimi Meyer. I live at 95 Scutamunk Road, and I would like to build, uh, glass addition to my house.
You want to start us off, Jonathan?
Sure, um, if you could give a copy of my, uh, okay. Vote for your memorandum, uh, doing the application on the eleventh. The purpose submissions, we'd like to see a short, uh, report, uh, and, uh, for column two, uh, we need to see the, uh, the labels for the, uh, those setbacks, uh, any existing trees that are meeting or greater?
No.
Show on the plan, and if they're going to be removed for the next...
There's no trees on the, on the area we're going to live, or we're going to build.
And, uh, if there's any, you know, area that is going to be graded, you can show the limits or disturbance, so that they can not align, say this is the area that's going to be graded, but then beyond that...
No, nothing will be graded, no.
You need to show that on the plan, just... You have to show things like that on the plan. It's not...
It is on the plan.
Okay, okay. The limits of disturbance are on the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, uh, we show the, uh, the, uh, the grading lines and contours, uh, and any lighting that you're going to add, uh, where it's, where they'll be pictured, and the details of the loads that you're going to use and how bright they'll be, uh...
Outside?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay. On the site plan, you need to, uh, show a statement in the case, these only require this, like, you require setbacks, and then what setbacks you're going to use, uh, it's on the, the smoke requirements table. And then landscaping, if you're going to install any landscaping, afterwards, the board likes to see that after you've built the house, if you're going to put landings around the foundation or structural lines, uh, to mitigate the, the view of, of the neighboring property.
There is no view from the neighboring property. It's nine acres.
And, uh, and then we also know that the, uh, super room is going to be 600, 60 square feet. But we wanted to know the total square footage addition, including improvements, improvements to basement.
That's 660 square feet, only that room, exactly.
And, um, I don't think we have a determination whether or not this project is going to be physical from any of the designated markers, uh...
I don't think so. The, we can't, nobody could see my house even from the outside. It's 600 feet above the road from one side and about 2,000 feet from the other side.
And we noted that the, uh, the roof is composing heritage style, chingled in a green color, and the most siding is, uh, certain D or Royal President Green color, which appears to be natural colors for the siding, uh, who are... And I assume you want to match, this being the siding. And then on the new videos, we asked that you, A I D anti-reflective window films, if they don't have glare, uh, and the board stated there's no meeting trees or larger to be removed.
Correct.
And then, uh, uh, typically in these cases, we asked that you submit some photographs of the neighboring homes, so that the planning board can look at that and make a judgment that it's in, uh, to keep you with the surrounding buildings. Uh, and those are mine, uh, of...
Thank you, Jonathan. Does the board have questions for Jonathan? Yes, no? Does the board have questions, Leah?
But... I was just going to say, typically, uh, what you can do is you may, it may be helpful to the board if you answer my, you may, like, a letter...
They specifically said in the email not to answer anything.
Excuse me, what?
The email, it says not to answer anything before I come here.
Yeah, yeah.
So why can't I answer before I come here?
Are you saying you don't want to cooperate?
Why do I need to come here and ask for the questions and then come back to answer? Why couldn't I answer it before?
Because this is the process of the planning board, that every applicant goes through.
Got it, okay. Just want to understand it.
So do you understand the last comment by, uh, Mr. Lockman, that, um, you have his memo? If you just submit a letter that responded to each one of those comments, that would be very helpful to the board and their deliberations?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, actually, I was, I was up at the house that you live in. I know the, the lot that you, you're in. So for you, it's, it's, it's easy. If you just answer the questions that are on the, on the Mr. Lockman's letto, and just go to the four sides of your house and take a picture looking, I know it sounds silly, but we just need it for the record. Like, one would be towards the trees, you know, two of the sides can be towards the trees. I think the front of your house looks down towards the rez, and then the, the garage, the garage side where the driveway is, just, uh, so everybody that's not familiar with where your home is gets an idea of what's around it and the potential impacts, um, that are, may or may not be there. That's all that, that's, that's all they're looking for, or all this board is looking for.
Which neighbor's house should I take a photograph of?
Yeah, and then you email that into the building department, and they'll add it to...
Which, which house? On Apple Hill, on, I mean, I have no houses around my house, you know?
I know you don't, and that's what I'm trying to say.
So which house should I take?
I, I understand you have no, I've been, I've been to your home before. I know where there's no houses around you, but not everybody on this panel of this board has been. So all we're asking you to do is, there's four sides to your house, front, two sides and the back.
Okay, that's...
Stand at the front of your house, looking towards the rez. Take a picture. It's going to show that there's nothing there.
So not from the neighbor's houses?
No, no, no. From your house, looking towards where your neighbors would be.
Got it.
Even though you don't really have any neighbors.
I have the pictures, but you want me to send them?
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
On, on the map they gave us, it says 23 Eagle Street.
Oops. Yeah, just on the, when you resubmit, just have the right, uh, address on it. That's all with no risk.
But on the front cover?
I see it. Yes, I could see that, good.
So that just needs to be corrected. And then I just had a question on that same sheet. So, the addition is having a basement?
Correct.
Is, so it looks like there's a door and windows there?
Correct.
Okay, so the rest of the house, this is, is this also exposed, the rest of the basement?
This, the, that kind, it goes like a slope down, so the rest of the house is higher, correct.
Okay. All right, because it...
I could show you... Yes, I could show you a picture.
There is a door not going into the basement. They're fully exposed in that area.
There is, so, correct.
Yeah.
It's going into the basement now.
Okay.
The door, so it's exposed.
Okay, that's what I couldn't understand. If that was exposed or...
The back, and then right in here, it's just opening it up, and then, and I'm in the basement.
Okay. So then, this stair, excuse me, this, where it looks like a staircase, that, this is going to be a staircase going all the way down?
This is existing houses, it's from the town.
Okay, so this is, is this the back of that?
This is the side.
Side.
That's the side. Okay.
So they have doors, and then it goes more down.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there's a steep slope. There's a steep, there's a steep slope up there.
Okay, yeah, that's hard to tell from the job. Okay.
Yeah, that's a beautiful location up there.
This is the existing doors here.
That's...
They built that there.
Yeah.
EAF form mentioned, that's something we submit to you now, or we have the building department, the building department?
No, it needs to go in before the build, it needs to be with the application, before the build. A short EAF, uh, EAF part one. Um, you do it through the, uh, the, the online mapper, usually.
I'm looking at the site plan that you guys submitted, and it, it, it's just all blank. So the things that I asked for...
So you need an existing condition site plan?
Yes, in the area of the addition, where it's going to be ready, so, you know, right now it's light. So that's why I listened to those links about, we're putting in the building setbacks.
Look at that, how far is it from the block line? Is it 27 feet, 40 feet, 30?
And then just, uh, in response to this memorandum, you just make up a package of things to respond and then submit it to the building department. And Maria will be able to send it to the board members, and plus, and it'll be ready for the next...
What will that be signed, and why this is visible from the vision areas? You mentioned that this is not a consignment, yeah?
There is, actually, it's up for, it's up to the applicant to show this board that it's not viewable from a view corridor. So on the Village of Woodbury webpage, uh, there's a view corridor map, um, PDF that you can download. Uh, what's, what's, what is it, 105 over there? Is it view corridor? It's on that map, it shows you the streets at a, the view corridor. So what you would do is, is you look at that map, you stand in that view corridor looking towards the home, and you take a picture from the view corridor. So basically, we're looking to see that, uh, given the vegetation and the state of the house and everything else there, that it can't be seen from that view corridor. And it, it's, it's really a simple process. It's either you can see it...
I understand.
Or you can't see it.
So we take a picture from the view corridor?
Yep, you take a picture from the view corridor, you submit it to the building department, they put it with the application.
Put an arrow where the houses...
What's up?
Can't see it.
Yeah, a little, like, arrow where the house, if you can't see the house, just draw a little arrow where the, the house would be on the picture. And then it gets submitted to the building department, and that's what we use to determine if it's...
Every property has a different view corridor, and a few unique ones.
Here's, um, depending on where you are in the Village of Woodbury, there are a bunch of view corridors. There's six, there's 32, there's 105, there's Ridge Road.
What would we go, this property, do you know where this property is located?
I know where it is. It's, give me a second.
While the chairman is looking at that... indicates the property is one acre, the county's website says that it's 8.7. Do you know why that distinction is?
I said that it's almost nine acres.
Okay, so just the applica, I don't have it in front of me, it must have just been an error in the application, that's all. Okay, so it's 8.7 acres. Okay, thank you. And the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is that you can designate this as a type two action to SECRE.
Thank you, sir. I got the map, hold on, I just gotta.
You mentioned that two prior applications were exempt from the moratorium, does this apply to this one too?
Yes.
Yes.
This would be, this is exempt from the moratorium as well.
And it doesn't apply now, or the moratorium won't apply to the project?
The moratorium doesn't apply to the ARB because you're not, you're adding to an existing structure.
It doesn't apply to this particular application for the circumstances that you're presenting. Different ARB may be different, but for your application, as with the others, you are exempt from the moratorium.
Thank you. This takes local data impression.
Understood.
Can't find the map. That's temperature.
Why am I having such a hard time?
It's on the website, family.
It's on the website. I redo thing, yeah. This is actually one of the maps we're working on getting updated, so it's easier to find this stuff on. building department, and let her ask, you know, what view corridor you're in, and they can tell you where to take the picture from.
You'll tell them?
They'll tell you. Just tell them you need to know what, what view corridor your application faces, and they can tell you where to take the picture.
So we go there, we take a picture, and we show it to the board?
Yeah, with a little arrow where your house is if we can't see it. So that's the whole idea behind that, and then if we can't see it, then it's, we move past that part of the application. If we can see it, then we gotta talk about mitigation. But if I remember correctly, I don't think, unless you're, the only place you remember seeing your home is if you're standing at the rez, looking that way, but I don't think that's the view corridor over there.
I'm talking to the side.
All right, any other questions, comments, concern? All right, so you got a little bit of homework for your next admission?
So we supply everything you need, you know, the income, the, the, the?
You give everything to the building department, and they, they send it out to everybody that's involved. And then he'll, once we get everything in, we'll look at it, we'll get you on the agenda again, let me review it, and then we can take, probably, if you, if you get everything in that we're asking for, then we can schedule the public hearing at your next, at your next appearance, and we can move forward from there. Thank you, gentlemen. Goodnight. Gonna go back to?
Eastgate?
Eastgate.
What is she waiting for?
Who are you here for?
Uh, it's, this one, and coming here. I don't know, uh, why I can't be the coming here, sorry. So, in this one.
She was the next one, Tommy.
Oh, you were next, you?
That's, that's Summit Avenue, that was the first one.
Okay, so you, you live near Summit Avenue?
Avenue?
You, Summit, you live near Summit Avenue?
No, I live in 40, Woodward Terrace. Woodward, Paris, uh, 40. Yeah. Woodward.
Oh, Wood, Wood, Woodward Terrace?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so what they did is, when there's a public hearing, they have to send notifications out to all the houses within a specific radius. So they were just letting you know?
So, I can call my husband?
You don't, you don't, you don't need to, you don't actually don't, you actually don't need to be here. This was just to let you know that there was someone trying to do construction near where you live, and that you could talk about it if you, you had anything to say about it. This has nothing to do with your property, nothing to do with you.
She's not understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I know.
Yeah, go ahead. Call your husband.
Sorry.
All right, you know what I'm gonna do? I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, we have to, we have to do anything about Eastgate, just second.
Oh, yeah.
I got, I got this. I'm going to open that, that, what, what, and then he'll tell me, and I'll, 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 I'll,